Everybody please stand. I'm gonna give the invitation followed by Councilman Andrews who's going to lead us into the pledge of allegiance. Everybody please follow his. Dear Lord, thank you for being with us and for loving us. Thank you for allowing us to have Councilman Andrews as part of our city family over twenty years.
Amen.
His guidance and personal integrity will be sorely missed. We ask that you keep Councilman Andrews and his family in your embrace as he continues his walk in life. Pray for your continued guidance in our lives. May we have love in our hearts as we enjoy your bounty. This we pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a seat. I'd like to particularly welcome Chairman Stone to be here with us. Thank you, sir, for being with us. Steve, Chairman Stone, you know, is the chairman of the Houston County Commission. Councilman Andrews, if you'd like to tell us your families' names.
I will.
Appreciate it.
My most favorite human being is right here in the green. That's my wife Angie.
Can you do that?
And to her left is Carly. She's my niece. Her parents, Carter and Ashley Gravitt, are just behind her. My father-in-law, Harold Hatton, is just beside Angie. And then my parents, Roy and Nancy Andrews. God bless all of them. We have to pray her again and pray for that lady.
I should have added to it. But thank you all so much for being here. And I was gonna say one more, but I'm gonna pull it off for a few minutes. Okay. Public comments. At this time, I entertain any public comments out there, if there are any. Okay. Nobody is calling in either, so we have no public comments. We'll move on to the next item, which is adoption of minutes. We have the minutes from March the second, 2021, regular council meeting, and the minutes of March eighteenth, 2021, special council meeting. I'll entertain a motion. For both sets of minutes to be passed, all we can do in the big week is a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt both the March second and March eighteenth minutes together in one motion.
I'll second that motion.
And we'll motion a second. And here in further discussion, you're not all favorably right hand. Both sets of minutes are now passed. Old business, we have the old business. New business. Number three is the appointment of Centerville Police Chief effective April the twelfth. Councilman Evans, you have that one, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, this is an exciting time, something we've been waiting for for quite a while. Although before I say anything further, I'd like to thank Sheriff Talton and the Insurance Department for the assistance today given us during this time when we've been looking for it, searching for a police chief. Their help has really done us well and it's helped us to get in a position where we can bring a chief in to a department that is functioning well and let him go from there. So we went through this process. Councilman Wright and I were both involved in it extensively. We decided this time, we were looking for a police chief, to get the Georgia Association of Police Chiefs involved to help us screen the candidates that we had so that we could come up with the best qualified person for the job. And I think, I think we've done it. And so, just a little bit about this gentleman. He's from Montezuma, Georgia, okay? He's worked for the Department of Corrections and he's been in the policing business for quite a while, since nineteen ninety-six. When he was with the Montezuma Police Department, he's held quite a few, just about every position in the department, from patrol officer all the way to assistant chief. So he's got a lot of good experience. And recently, he's been with the Waynesboro Police Department as a major. And, you know, he's been involved quite extensively with, with the operations there. And one thing I'd like to mention is that he's been the agency training officer. And training is very important when it comes to, to the quality of, and training of police officers. And he is a God-fearing man. He's a deacon in his church. He's got two children, Paige and Nicholas. And so he's a family man also. Currently, he's attending the University of Arizona, a master's degree in organizational management program with a specialization in human resources. And he'll finish that early next year. And he's a car buff too. He's got himself a nineteen sixty-seven Chevy S ten that he likes to work on. And, and I'm speaking to you about Senator Duncan. And Chief Duncan will be starting here on April twelve, which is Monday coming up. And so if you would stand. And come on up.
We'll take a photo?
Well, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Sarah, come on, you still got.
What are they gonna do, go jail?
Just hang on.
Hang on, see, I just don't wanna be rebutted, 'cause somebody will say something on the way out. Trying not to let the door hit me on the rear end on the way out, so.
Yeah, y'all, get close. Ready? One, two, three.
Smile.
Smile with your eyes so we can see y'all are happy. Always great.
All right, you can see the smile right through our mask, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
But he's gonna be sworn in on Monday, April twelfth, at nine AM in the morning. That's what time we're gonna have in here. Invitation's out.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, with that said, I move that we appoint Senator Duncan as the new police chief.
Second. Now, we'll motion a second. You know, I'm just so excited by this, I can't quite believe myself, I'm so excited. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign? No sign? Aye is it. We got it. Thank you, sir. Item number four here is the Middle Georgia Regional Commission, Houston County Comprehensive Plan. Senior Government Services, Taylor Stickles is gonna be here. Government Services Specialists. Councilman Evans, Mayor DeMar, both with you.
Good evening. I'm Taylor Stickles with the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. And also going to be working on this plan, though cannot be here this evening, is Susan Landfrey and Caitlin Mead, both also with the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. Every five years, we do a comprehensive plan update for every city and county in the state. And it's just coming up time when Houston County is having their five-year update. So I'm here tonight just to give you a brief overview of the process. We've had a few discussions with people, with Kate and others, who wanted to give the council the opportunity to comment on our plan. So if you could, please go to the next slide. So the background, the previous plan was adopted in 2017, and this current update is due on, at the end of February of next year. The point of having a comprehensive plan, besides the fact that it requires all local government, is that it allows you to be a qualified local government, having PLG status, allows you to apply for several grants, several big grants, like community development block grants, GPAS loan loans, and a variety of other programs. As well as, once you do apply for those grants, increasingly, questions on these grant applications that the reviewers are looking at is, is this project something that you planned for in the comprehensive plan? So this is a time where, if you think of a big project that could be coming up in the future, that you might wanna apply for a grant for in the future, you wanna have it represented in your comprehensive plan, if possible, so that you can represent it. As well as, of course, it gives you the opportunity to help shape the growth of the community with a long-term vision, and as well as community action items to help you attain that vision. And finally, an informed zoning and rezoning decisions. Thank you. So, I'm sorry, the text on this slide is kinda small, but there's a few different comprehensive plan elements. Those are your community goals, where you identify, I mean, it sounds explanatory, but long-term and broad goals for the community. You have needs and opportunities that come from those goals. And finally, you have your community work program. Your community work program is your tangible, specific action items to obtain your goals and to address your needs and opportunities. In your community work program, you're going to have several topics. First is land use, which is the types of development that are happening, such as agricultural, commercial, residential, and the ideal location where these developments are happening. You have transportation, which is road conditions, public transportation, that also includes things like sidewalk and walkability, bike lanes, bikability. You have housing, which is not just the availability of housing, but the housing types, the quality of housing. You have broadband, which this, this is the first time broadband has been a required element. In the previous plans, broadband was not required. But broadband, of course, is just the investment in infrastructure for broadband connectivity in the community. With economic development, which is for, of course, attracting development. You have civic life, which is ostensibly your community events, your cultural resources, your historic resources, and generally your community, sort of community life. Infrastructure, including the big things like water, sewer, as well as other areas that might need improvement. As, and finally, you have public safety and community services. These are things like your fire and your police. These are things like any other services that are offered by the city or the county. As well as these required elements, you can have any other, this is a topic that you'd like to have represented, if there's something in particular that, that a municipality cares greatly about, it can be represented in the comprehensive plan as well. If you could go to the next slide, please. So, this is our timeline. Right now, the first thing in April is our kickoff, that's what we're doing right now, where I'm just introducing the planning process to you. Starting at the, towards the end of April, towards June, we're going to be doing our public engagement. And that's, we're going to have a kickoff public hearing. We're tentatively sort of looking at early May for that, but we'll, of course, keep everyone in the loop, as well as launching an online survey for the public to engage with and do some in-person event survey. I'll, more on that in a moment. Towards June through August, we're gonna have stakeholder committee meetings. And we're going to talk about each of those required elements, land use, transportation, housing, that I just went over. And we're going to take a deep dive into each of those topic areas and identify needs and opportunities, as well as start to get into the action items, what the city of Centerville wants to see with regard to each topic going into the future. In October and December, we're gonna have our final public hearing, where we're going to go over what we've learned, what we've drafted up, to give everyone an opportunity to comment, as well as to send the plan to the Department of Community Affairs, who has a thirty-day review. And as I mentioned, the deadline for this plan is at the end of February. However, we're hoping that we'll be ahead of schedule and can have the plan ready for adoption by the end of November, if possible, just to allow a few buffer months for things to take a little longer, if necessary. And if you could go to the next slide, please. So our next steps, on Saturday, myself, as well as the other two members of the Middle Georgia Regional Commission working on this plan, are going to be at the Centerville Block Party. We're gonna have a table set up and try to solicit people to give us some ideas on particularly community services, housing, civic life, and just generally life in Centerville. This is our first public engagement attempt, where we just hope to get, really, as many responses as we can, just have people write on sticky notes, Centerville would be, you know, Centerville needs more blank regarding this topic. Centerville would be great with blank and having people write with the ideas, and we'll take that back and really synthesize what we get out of that. We're gonna be developing an online survey, as I mentioned, and we're going to publish that hopefully soon. We'll be in contact with the social media people to get that pushed out on Centerville social media. We're gonna be forming a stakeholder committee, and we'll need your help with that, to schedule the stakeholder meetings where we talk about each comprehensive plan topic. And finally, as I mentioned, we'll be scheduling the required public hearing. And one more slide, please. So, what we need help with, and I don't need the answers right, right this moment, but these are things to be thinking about sooner rather than later, if possible, is, first of all, who, how do you wanna structure these stakeholder meetings? Some communities prefer to do just one or two longer meetings, where we talk about every single required element with one group of people, and just kinda knock it out in a day or two. And, and that works well for some communities. And other places prefer to do a one-hour meeting per topic with one group of people or with different groups of people per topic, and just spread it out more, not have a sort of a marathon session. So we'll, just curious for the council's ideas of how, how that's gonna work for Centerville in doing those stakeholder meetings, as well as identifying the members of the stakeholder committee. That could be things like elected officials and department heads. It could also involve members of the public, or really anybody who, who seems fit.
Taylor, I'd, I'd love to chime in on that. We got a great meeting, you, me, and Susan to talk about this. And I kept Mary Council in the loop by sending out an email, just to update you guys on this timeline. All this information should seem fairly familiar, but just wanted to let you know that we are so excited about the public input opportunity. It's the spring block party. You guys started off with lots of great public input opportunities about five years ago with Card Matters in Lee. So I think it'll do really well, and hopefully we'll get a couple hundred people who will just pop a sticky note up there. And then we have discussed at our meeting about potentially incorporating some of the stakeholder committee meetings into our planning, which we. Just wanted to keep you guys in the loop on how we had talked about all of that.
Yes, thank you. And so that, that was my last slide. If at this point there's any questions, or if there's any thoughts on, on my questions there, I'd be glad to hear any of them. Also, headshot.
It's an aggressive plan, you know, and I'm looking forward to, is working on again. I remember from five years ago, we set some great goals there at that time, and I believe we achieved them during that time period. So I think we can do the same thing again. And citizen input is very important. I'd like to see a lot of citizens get involved, particularly this, this time.
We think the Block Party will be a great opportunity for it, as well as the online survey. Kate, have, has the survey been sent to the council?
I've not sent those questions that you guys sent. I will get those out to you guys, along with a copy of this presentation, so you can mull over the questions that Taylor presented this evening, but we can set up a comprehensive response back to them.
Yes, and so we, we drafted a brief online survey, just mostly sort of higher-level stuff, as well as some demographic questions that we'll help to advertise on Centerville social media, in addition to the in-person Block Party engagement that we do. And if there's any other opportunities for, for public engagement that could show up, you know, we're certainly amenable to, to get as much public input as possible.
I have a question. In those categories that you were talking about, like land and safety and all that kind of stuff, I notice you didn't have any in Parks and Recreation?
Parks and Recreation is gonna go mostly under civic life. It, it's sort of, Parks and Recreation is, is kinda difficult. It's sort of a mix of the natural and cultural resources, which is a required element, as well as land use, as well as sort of civic life. So it could, it could go sort of anywhere. We've tentatively put it under there, we can, we have the freedom to move that around if, if it's, if thinking that it would be, make more sense elsewhere, but we absolutely will be talking about Parks and Recreation in the stakeholder groups, one way or another.
I've got one. People, historically, we've actually been involved in, in GPAs, and we've had success with that, and have paid them back, and, you know, it looks like the city right now is relatively debt-free, and in very good financial shape. What about the, the community development block grants? Do you see us as being eligible for that, or is that something that we could take part in at some point in the future?
Absolutely. I mean, they, community development block grants can be small, or they can be pretty large, you know, they don't cost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but they can be, I'm not really even aware of a minimum, you could probably do a twenty-five thousand dollar at CDVG. It just has to have a certain level of, the beneficiaries have to be majority low-to-modern income persons. So if there's a certain concentration in the city of Centerville, where there's presumably low-to-modern income persons, then a project that you could potentially do CDVG for, absolutely. There's no barrier to, to being able to do that, other than meeting the investment threshold.
The CDVG program's been on the radar of the housing team the past three years, as we've participated in the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing Program. It's one of those that's really difficult to be competitive for on an application scale, and I'm sure Taylor can tell you that the application is quite intensive. And when we want to apply for this grant, we typically have to let the regional commission know through a TA letter by January, so that they can get that application out in May. There's a lot of resident surveying. And so this year, with the 2021 CHIP grant, that was kind of us easing into a more competitive opportunity for getting some of these larger grants. And I think a CDVG is a great opportunity for the housing team moving forward, too.
On this side of Pousso Lake, which is the side that I've lived on for the past, what, twenty-seven years almost, twenty-five, and there, there is a, as, as the city ages, that's gonna always be a difficulty, that we need to continue to stay focused on that and not let it, you know, degrade. Thank you for the time to that.
Yes, sir. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Taylor. Always gives us a lot to think about.
Looking forward to working with all of you.
All right, very good.
Okay, item number five here is a warning of bid, annual audit services fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Councilman Evans and Mayor Harrison, please.
So, every year, we have to have an audit, of course, of government requirements. And our city accountant is very involved in that, so, so this year, as a council, we made a decision to go out for bids, just to see what else was out there. And, you know, I, I always, I've always felt that, you know, competition brings down prices. And I, I think that's happened this year. So I'm gonna go ahead and let our city accountant tell us what she needs to tell.
Thank you, Councilman Evans. In your folder tonight, there is a summary of the scoring of the bids that we received. And first off, just preface that, preface that by saying, we, as a city, received two bids for professional audit services for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. The accounting firms that submitted the bids were Malden and Jenkins and Nichols and Colley, which Nichols and Colley, we, we currently have used for many years. Myself and other members of the community participated as a team to score these bids. And like I said, within the, your folder tonight, you have a summary of the scoring. Malden and Jenkins scored with a range of seventy-four to one hundred, with an average scoring of eighty-eight. Nichols and Colley scored with a range from eighty to ninety-six, with an average of eighty-seven point seven five. Both of the firms have a vast amount of experience with governmental audits. Each firm has very qualified staff, managers, and partners, all of which met the CPE requirements. Both firms also meet the requirement for peer review as well. Both firms are very well-known in the southeast region. They both have a very stellar reputation within the accounting industry and within conducting governmental audits. As myself and the team, as the team looked at both firms, again, they both had a very stellar reputation. One firm was a little bit less in the fees that they were going for the cost proposal. Excuse me. Malden and Jenkins' cost proposal for the three years was seventy-eight thousand dollars. Nichols and Colley for the three years is ninety-three thousand dollars. You know, I know we've used Nichols and Colley for many years, but if we have the opportunity to save almost five thousand dollars a year, I would suggest and recommend to mayor and council that they might go ahead and try Malden and Jenkins for our professional audit service, moving forward.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we employ Malden and Jenkins as our attorney.
Second. Okay, motion a second. Any further discussion?
I do, Mayor. I, as I recall, I, I'm gonna be honest with you, since my last night, I can say this. I have a personal connection to Nichols College, and they are my favorite. But as I recall, for the last several years, due to the training that we get, I, I've heard it over and over and over again, put it out for bid, put it out for bid, put it out for bid. And as I recall, a couple weeks, months ago, I don't know when, that I was like, y'all, we need to, we need to bid this. But it's clearly obvious, when you look at seventy-eight thousand versus ninety-three thousands, forty-five hundred dollars the first year, five thousand the second year, fifty-five hundred the third year, we're saving fifteen thousand dollars.
I think there's also something to be said for having new eyes.
Yes.
You know, I know we've had Nichols and College for a number of years, but I think there's some wisdom in having a different auditor look at the same thing, that, you know, I, I know they have different individual boys come in every year, but.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's a wise decision at this point.
One other thing, one other benefit with going with Malden and Jenkins is that they offer to myself and to our financial staff continuing education at no cost. Which I think is kind of nice.
Yeah, that's great.
I think, I think in their proposals, I said that would be like a three thousand dollar benefit. So, you know, we can, we can go for continuing education at no cost for them.
No call for a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Not hearing? Not passive? Thank you very much, Ms. Harrison, that was, that was some great work, and thank the team of various cities that keep on here, helped us out. Breeding Commission, City of Mary, thank all of them.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, item number six here is approval of change order number fifteen for the new fire station. Councilman O'Neal, Fire Chief Jones, please.
Yes, sir, I'm gonna turn over to Chief Jones to break it down for us.
Thank you, Captain O'Neal, you have the best, Mayor, counsel. Tonight, I'm here to request approval for change order number fifteen for the new fire station. About half of these changes on this change order are requests that I made. The other half are architectural and construction oversights that need to be changed. The amount is seventeen thousand, sixty-two dollars and four cents, an increase in that amount. If you want, we'd like me to go into detail about some of the items I can.
I think everybody's had a chance to read it, but you, anybody who wants to hear it?
Yes.
Okay, item number one is adding drywall to the day room and kitchen area. What that was, it originally had block wall in that area. It's a big room like this room, and it's the major room for the kitchen and the day room, we're gathering to be hanging out most time, and it'll be really loud in there, so I, I asked them to have a sheet rock on there that kind of reduces the noise. The second item, they had to add a chase wall, because the original wall that was between the men's and women's restroom, the builders, the architects missed that they built the wall right on top of a support beam, and they could not drill the holes in the support beams that didn't run on the pipe chases. The steel supports, number three, item number three, the steel supports that they had to add to the overhead door beams, that's an oversight by the architects. But that's, that's material that should have been caught by the architect. But that's that's material that should have been caught by the architects in the beginning. It was not. Uh same thing with the item number four, the ceiling expansion joints and this is in the bay. It's such a large area, it's a lot of sheet rock. And they wanted to put expansion joints in because if you don't, the sheet rock could crack. Item number five, I requested this change. It's similar to this room, uh where cha we at we have rows of lights in our training room and they had it all on one switch. And if we ever wanna, you know, which we do a lot of watching PowerPoints when we're training, we'd like to be able to turn off the one row of lights.
It's cheaper to do that now than it is to decide you wanna do it later once the bill's drawn.
Do what then?
It's cheaper to do that now than the way.
Exactly, exactly. Same thing with the uh day room. They have a lot of lights in the day room kitchen and I asked them to put the kitchen lights on one switch, the day room lights on one switch. So that's that's that change. And then the other change, change six, uh we have twenty eight bunkers upstairs and I asked them to move four of them downstairs. So there was a a cost with that and the cost of redoing their the plans for that. And then the the item number seven is actually a cost savings, um some flooring changes we made last week.
I don't know why they put one. I don't get that. I I'm sorry to make that comment. Um question number two or no item number two, I have a question. When they do that, is it gonna be seen or is it gonna look junky or I mean they gonna have that done right?
It's just really a thick wall now. You can't tell.
You're not gonna be able to tell that they've been there.
You've just taken up six mornings of of days that aren't done.
Lost full square footage of it. You lost square footage in your office?
Exactly.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. His office is smaller than the mayor's office. I'll make sure of that when they build that.
He really did too.
I did.
It's that kind of quality work. We're gonna miss the most. Didn't say it was done by.
Councilman Evans, you wanna make a motion?
So I'm gonna make a motion that we uh accept the um approval of change order number fifteen for the new fire station.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Here and done. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Actually, the last change that I know of, um is getting put in complete, so.
I know. We're gonna hold you to that.
That's right. Let's some extraordinary happens. I don't know if anybody.
We only have fifteen, so I think we'll still have more.
Well, we're we're looking at June.
We're looking at uh in June, first of July.
In June, first of July, bud. We'll be quiet that day.
If y'all need to go up there.
All the others here.
I want to do the whole thing and I want to.
Okay, item seven here is a form of information, approval of uniform policy. Councilman O'Neal and Fire Chief Jones.
Well, Chief, your show.
Thank you. Uh Mayor Council here just to give you guys a update. We added a uh short portion to our uniform policy for firefighters. Um what this uh addition is, is uh during the hot summer months, starting in May, you're gonna you may see some firefighters out there wearing shorts. And we're adding shorts policy to it. I have firefighter pay here with it.
Your demonstration.
All right, we have to say.
Jones, we know you wanted this. You wanted this this.
That's uh that's.
Works for me.
The guys will have an option to wear these uh during the months of May through September. Uh we did a a timeframe instead of a temperature because it's more feasible to do that. I I did my research, several places do timeframe, some places do temperature. And then it it say it's gonna be ninety five that day and it ended up being eighty. You know, I suppose I'm very short, so timeframe is a better option. Um we're doing this, like I said, give them option and then you'll see them out there doing their normal daily duty, you know, washing trucks, doing fireworks, stuff like that. If they ever respond to a call, they will be in their bunker hands. Um any type any any type of call. So we just wanted to do that for the guy. They've been on me for the last five years about it and I'm old school and I I I didn't wanna change. Um but I I seen a couple of departments that had it and they looked really nice and I talked to Councilman O'Neal and and he was he thought that that as well, so we're gonna make this change for firefighters.
Now, what month on the calendar is he gonna be?
May through September.
Hey, there's May May three, way to raise some money right there. May through October, you must be fucking. Have the calendar. David off of the calendar.
Thank you very much.
Item number eight is award of twenty twenty one L B project. District Secretary Councilman Wright and Director of Operation Brumfield, please.
Director Brumfield, catch us up, please.
Thank you, sir. As mayor, uh as you know, in the past, uh Mayor Council did approve to move forward with the twenty twenty one L B project uh Houston County and I would like to say, thank the chairman for all that the county does during this program. They they've really saved a lot of cities and a lot of counties a lot of money by doing this. Uh they did have bid open in brief construction was a little bid on the project and our portion of the project was a hundred and forty four thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and fifty cent. And uh our our consulting engineer representatives and myself recommend that we accept that bidder brief construction and to move forward and designate the mayor as signature on the contract for this project.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mayor, I move that we uh adopt the bid from Reeves Construction recommended by Director Brumfield.
Second.
Okay, a motion and second. Any further discussion?
I just said that we love the L B program. You know, we can all work together and make all of our cities and counties better. It's a it's a good deal for all of us.
Absolutely. As I said, the county has saved a lot of people a lot of money.
Absolutely.
Well, I think Chairman Stong was on the primary meeting, sort of solidating all those things a few years ago with this. I can't get a count of our money. The city is safe because well, involved in that program. We thank you for that. So we thank you all the county commissioners for that. Thank you. Continue. Keep it a go. Okay, that's point. All approved. I'll say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, passus. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor.
I love reading all these treats and all these. Yeah. All right. Item number nine is the Centerville Housing Team update.
Thank you, Mayor. We uh three years ago, we began the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing Program. It it with with twenty twenty being the way it was, it feels like we zoomed through the program, but uh we were able to complete all of our retreats uh virtually and we've had a lot of meetings via conference call and and telecommunication, things like that. And uh Director O'Neal's gonna give us a little update on the uh the housing team and some of the the work plan and things like that as we move toward the end of our time of progress. Okay?
Yes. So in front of you, you guys have our most recent virtual work plan. So this is actually something that we do twice a year. We started February and September of twenty nineteen and this one is our last one. We have one more retreat coming up September twenty twenty one. It'll be our first retreat back in person. We did half of our retreats in person and half of them virtual. I think this team of volunteers that we have, we have local nonprofits and community members who sit on this team. They have been the most adaptable volunteer team um in Centerville history. I'll make that claim because they have held on for some wild different things over the past year. So but in front of you, you guys have our work plan and this is very similar to what we've had every single um retreat. And it just has overall objectives like improving how existing housing opportunities in Centerville, creating opportunities for new homes in Centerville, and creating stronger community engagement for the city of Centerville. But you'll remember, we started out wanting to go after the G I T program designation because we were having a hard time articulating to the general public the low income housing tax credit project. And I think through this process, it really gave the power back to mayor and council. So through this process, we were able to award a single point to a developer. We exercised that right last year with Ray Makers and we've seen a great infill development come to the Houston County Galleria. Um one of the things that we were able to do because we were in this program is stay a certified alumni community. So even after our three years, we can still retain that power where mayor and council are able to award a single point. And that single point really does end up being the tipping point for a lot of these developers' applications.
Yeah, let me let me jump in on that and just just add a couple of things to it. You know, we we've had since I was, actually since about for six months before, I think I was sworn in four years ago, we have had a a number of uh D C A fund uh projects be kind of floated through the city, things be suggested, things be attempted, things be voted down. As we went through this last cycle, uh they made some changes to the application process and made it honestly a little easier for projects to get approved. And so uh we became convinced that because there is, i- if you're not familiar with this program, it's it's a it's a essentially a federal tax credit in order to build a particular type of housing and uh they were really determined to get these houses approved uh and and they just they continued to make the the money bigger and the application process easier. And so we we felt pretty convinced that somebody was gonna come and build something eventually because the money was just too big. And so uh the reason that we put our support, the main reason we put our support behind this project is we felt that it was the one uh that you know was best suited to the the wants and needs uh of the citizens. You know, we want more housing. Uh but the 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 tension is always between where does the where's the local populace want it located and where can the developer get the best deal, right? Their job is is to make money. And so uh we were able to find a good balance with this deal and try to make uh everybody as happy as we could. I think it's a good project. I I will say, and Kate correct if I'm wrong, but it is it's fairly unusual for multiple projects to be awarded in a short span of time in a in a community as small as this one. So um you know, I I think we will see um less of this type of development be be pushed through in the city that you know, there's and there's advantages and disadvantages to that. But I know that many folks are concerned uh that we're gonna continue to see, uh I know there's lots of discussion with the properties that have been built in Morrobs and Perry and other areas. I think we are gonna see a a really excellent project get completed here uh in a good area for Centerville and and also I think probably see that at least slow down in the foreseeable future. So um okay, is there anything else you wanted to add to the report work?
Yeah, and that the project specifically, Addington at Galleria Mall, that's the first phase and it was only sixty four units. And so we may see some attention from them as far as the second phase and the third phase, but they're more competitively placed in that application process to expand their current property than any other application would be. Um other projects that we've been able to accomplish with the housing team though is to really focus on rehabilitating the existing housing stock. So we worked together with the residents in the Crestwood Estates neighborhood to rehabilitate that sign. They don't have a formalized H O A and they actually fundraised all the money and we recruited a new housing team member through that. But they actually helped redo all of their sign, redid the landscaping, gave it a fresh coat of paint. Best Signs and Byron and Warner Robbins, they helped actually put the letters and they donated those letters. So it's been a really great opportunity for the city to just focus on housing and focus on community development and what we can do for our existing residents along with recruiting new residents. But just wanted to share this work plan with you guys. It's got a lot about our CHI and existing co enforcement partnerships with the housing team. And the CHI is a community home investment program and that's that application that we're still getting feedback on that could be as much as a four hundred thousand dollar grant for low income residents in our four target areas by our two thousand eighteen housing assessment. But again, just wanted to share this with you guys and it is our last formal work plan and we are wrapping up that program.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you very much. All exciting things happening all the time. Item number ten is award distinction. Yeah, let me tell you about that. Um the Harold F. Post Municipal Training Institute is a continuing education program designed to help city officials enhance their knowledge and skills in municipal related matters. The Municipal Training Institute is operated with a partnership between the Georgia Municipal Association and the University of Georgia Carl Benson Institute of Government. They have five level levels here. First level is a certificate of recognition. It requires twenty forty two hours of training. The next level is a certificate of achievement, which requires seventy two hours of training. Third one is a certificate of excellence, which requires a hundred and twenty hours of training. The fourth is a certificate of distinction, which requires two hundred and four hours of training. And the fifth, which is the highest you can get, requires two hundred and seventy six hours of training. Two hundred and seventy six hours. Councilman Evans, just step forward, please. This training, you know, all our council members up here and myself, we were what they call part time. It's not our full time job, obviously. But think of two hundred and seventy six hours, you know, you got more than that. How many hours total?
Um right now, probably close to three hundred.
Close to three hundred hours of training he's acquired to make him a better council member and better servant for the citizens of Centerville. And he's uh the second one to receive this in the city of Centerville since the time it's been there. It's a wonderful award right here. The certificate of dedication. And I am very, very proud to send this to you. Well, Greg, the relationship's on. I mean, just thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
I say it was only the second one in the city of Centerville. I think it's only the fifth one in all of Houston County since Houston County, yes, has been given this award out. Everybody else worked towards it. All right, item number eleven, announcement proposal on Councilman Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh after um nearly twenty years of service to our community, I've decided to step down and give someone else the opportunity and the privilege to serve our great city on this council. My wife and I, uh who's here tonight, have decided to relocate uh to the south part of the county in in Elko. Uh and no, I'm not running for the mayor of Elko. I'm running for the front porch. This has always been a dream of ours to own a little property and get outside of neighborhood living. I will greatly miss the city and life here in Centerville, but I am excited about the future for myself and my family. I'm also very excited excited about the future of the city of Centerville. I love this city and a part of my heart will always be here in Centerville. I have raised my family here and for that, we are all grateful and have been better for it. I'm thankful to God for everything that he has allowed me to take part in and I've been blessed beyond measure and I know it. To the citizens of Centerville, please take care of this city. It is unique and it's special. And know that the governing body and employees of our city do an incredible job to make this place the special place that it is. To the employees of the city, thank you for your patience with me in two thousand one as a young thirty two year old man and now a seasoned fifty two year old man. And I'm very thankful for uh you all giving me the opportunity to be taught what it takes to run this place even up to the last day. Uh you go above and beyond the call of duty and for that, there may be little thanks, but I do thank you for all the details that you deal with day in and day out. This is not an easy job, but you make it work every day. Krista Bettyfield, I love you. You are the glue that holds this thing together. I remember when I came on to council and Virginia Abbott was the city clerk, that you were the future of the clerk's office. You have done well and will continue to do well and I am forever indebted to you. Mike Brumfield, I love you too and what you stand for. Please don't retire just yet. It's not time to go. Your institutional knowledge of this city is priceless. Um and I'll leave it at that. Mike keeps telling me you'll be back and um I I I need you to keep working until I can come back, so. Your department is solid and it does an incredible job for our citizens. You are also the glue that holds the city together. Jason Jones, believe it or not, I love you too. Thank you for being a solid presence in our fire department. Your department is a workhorse and I look forward to the dedication of the new fire department. I will be there. Um I will um I will will be expecting an invite. Um and I promise to smile and stay quiet like a former city councilperson should do. Besides chatting neighbors are there, you know, to keep you straight. And I promise I won't make any like you guys are great car washers or barbecue comments at all. I'm 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 done with that. To our new chief of police, um and it's cam out of here. There you go. Um it'll be reported. Thank you for coming. We need you. Keep my cell phone number and I'll give you some thoughts now that I don't have to have such a guarded filter. Your success is our success and you and our department will be in my prayers continually. You know much better than I do that being a police officer today is di is difficult but rewarding and how the job is full of different challenges now unlike the past. and how the job is full of different challenges now unlike the past. I like that he has great hair too. To Becky Tities, I love you. I was gonna save you for last, but it would have been much more difficult to do so. We have come a long way together, girl. I know that sounds like a Dances with Wolf quote or a Virginia Slim commercial, but the city is a different place because of you and I am forever grateful for all of the advice and the direction over the years, even when we did not agree. Words cannot express how I feel about our friendship. Now that Angie and I will live closer, we'll have to do some front porch sitting with you and Stan in Elko and Vienna. I'm looking forward to that without worrying about whatever lawsuits coming down the pipe. Again, thank you. Um, and make sure y'all take my name off of the, um, the, um, the, whatever you call that.
The letterhead?
Yeah. No more anti-light on the notices. To Carol, thank you for keeping it real, even when we didn't agree. I am better for it and you are probably too. To Kate, thanks for moving us forward when we needed to be moved forward. Stay focused on that as the city moves ahead in the years to come. Uh, to Chris Coleman and Jeff Thompson, I am thankful for our friendship. I cherish it. To Lee Seifer, thank you for tolerating all the telephones over the years. You'll be proud to know that I finally bought my first cellphone ever recently and they aren't cheap. Um, keep up the great detailed work that you do for the city. To Terry Wright, we go way back to Northside High School in the eighties and I'm thankful for our friendship. To Betty Chamberlain, you and your department have never had any complaints as far as I know, uh, or y'all just didn't tell me. I thank you, I cannot thank you enough for what all you do over there each day. Sarah Caldwell, you guys get it done in court even through COVID and you deserve a medal. To others I have served and worked with over the years, Mary Ann Wigan, Ronnie Brean, Walker Fowler, Randall Wright, Jared Wilson, Bob Smith, Bubba Edwards, Eddie Tucker, and John Nichols, you have all made me a better public servant. To the Houston County Commission and the chairman who's here tonight and Sheriff Tauton and Sheriff Tauton's department, thank you for all of the help that you guys have so graciously given, uh, to Centerville over the year, e- over the years, even when we have not deserved it. Um, you have saved us several times, Chairman, and I would like for you to pass that on to, to Coleman the next time that you see him. I, I, I'm sure that when I do that, I've missed many, mentioning many, but I count you all friends. Another elected official, um, here in town called me this week, just a few days ago and said, Cameron, you leave office with more friends than enemies and that's hard for a politician to do. I'm proud to call you friend. I will remember that comment for a long time. Thank you, Angie, my favorite person in the world, for allowing me to serve. And to my adult children, Madison and Caleb, who have been alongside me the whole way. They have grown up here in Centerville and this is their hometown stock. My family as well, who are here tonight, have supported me through the years and really kind of tolerated me. Um, I'll be back for dinner on Tuesday nights now. As I leave this seat tonight, I know that the city is in good hands. Mayor John Harley, Councilman Michael Evans, Councilman Ed R. Meho, and Councilman Justin Wright. I did that because that's the order of you guys, y'all, y'all's rank now at this point. Um, Councilman Evans, you are now the senior councilman. Um, it has been a privilege to, to help lead the city together. We have not always agreed and it has not always been easy. But I do know that despite our minor differences of opinion over the years, that we all have the city's best interest at heart and we have done our best to keep it from being messy in the news media. And I appreciate that more than you know. I have done better in the last several years about staying out of the news media until Kendra wrote that two thousand five hundred word essay about me this week. But I do appreciate that. Um, what, how humbling and, um, I appreciate you for that. Thank you for allowing me to be vocal at times, more than I probably should have, and thank you for also teaching me to listen, even when I didn't want to. Hopefully that will help me when I decide to get into politics again in the future. With that said, I look forward to what comes next, whatever that may be, whatever God wants it to be. And I wish you all the blessings now and in the days ahead. For the last time, as your post one council, councilman, thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak. And, um, I would like to resign my post as soon as the executive session is complete tonight.
I heard one mistake when he said that. He started off, he says, it's almost twenty years. He has many more than twenty years of service to the city. He was on the planning and zoning commission with me for years. That counts as service to the city. We went through some great times.
Yep.
Is that a good word for it? Oh, yeah.
I served on the library board for, um,
Yeah, the library board too.
Full term and then about half a term.
Love of that. Thank you so much for everything. Uh, Chairman Stott, do you want to take a few moments, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. I'm honored to be here with you tonight. But I'm honored to be here with Councilman Andrews. I tell you, I've thought about it a lot since he's made his announcement publicly. What all he's meant to the city of Centerville. Twenty years of his life, he's given. And I can tell you, in my belief, Centerville is better today than it was when he got here. You can look around and the improvements that have been made, the growth of the city and all. And I believe Councilman Andrews directly touched that, along with the rest I get to serve. We've got to all remember that we work for the people. The people don't work for us. And I think Councilman Andrews has always demonstrated that. I think he's shown that he realizes who he works for and he tries to do the very best job he can do. He will be missed. He will be missed by me. He'll be missed up by those of us that serve on county commissioners, uh, employees with the county as well. Um, he's always energetic to me, as I don't know how y'all hear him, but he's always energetic. He's always willing to get something done. The only thing he wants, though, is wants it done tomorrow instead of, you know, with the time frame. Uh, and I think one thing, when he looks back over his time in Centerville, two things will be fond memories of his. And they're fond memories of mine and I didn't really touch them. But one is the street in front of this facility, the city hall. He put a lot of time and effort in that, behind the scenes, to make sure it was done the way that he thought the mayor and council wanted and all that. And I think, uh, when you go up and down the road, you'll be able to realize your hand touched that. The other thing is the park across the street. Turned out to be a fantastic facility. I know all of you had something to do with it, but I think, uh, he will say that I was there when that was accomplished. Again, I, I thank you for your friendship. You'll be missed. You have served the citizens well. You will do well in whatever your ventures carry you in the fut- future. You're saying you're not going to be the mayor of Elko. And as been told, that Mayor Harley is going to try to annex the interstate all the way down to twenty-six and come in and backdoor you and put Centerville down there. I don't know if that's going to happen tonight because there's a lot of obstacles that will come.
Y'all didn't stop that.
But, uh, anyway, we, we, uh, I'm glad you're staying here. This is home to you.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm just pleased that you have not made a decision to leave this county and, uh, you're going to stay here and you'll continue to make great contributions to this county. We've got something we'd like to present to you if you don't mind stepping over this way. And the gift that we've got for you symbolizes all three cities, Robbins Air Force Base and Houston County. I'll open that up for them. For those of you that can't see the details on it, it's a crystal cube. And inside that crystal cube, it's got the county seal. It's got the three cities' names around that county seal and it's got Robbins Air Force Base around that county seal. Uh, we hope that you have a prominent place to put that. And you can look at that seal on the days when you know mayor and council is meeting and you say, I wonder how y'all handling it tonight. Congratulations to you and thank you for your service.
There's some more things coming. We will do it after, we'll get to the meeting. Uh, out of number twelve is qualifying fee, special election June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Councilman Evans and City Clerk Beddingfield, please.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if it wasn't for Councilman Andrews, we wouldn't have to do this.
I know.
But, but I did try to convince him to stay until the middle of July or something. He wouldn't do it. But, you know, because, uh, uh, we're going to have to fill this seat, I'm going to go ahead and let the city clerk say his name.
Thank you, Councilman Evans. And like you said, if it wasn't for the announcement that Councilman Andrews made, we wouldn't be doing this right now. So. And he said he loved us, so I don't, I don't, I don't know. But with that being said, um, I have to, um, I have provided a copy of the ad that will run in the paper on Saturday for the call for the special election. And with that, mayor and council has to set the qualifying fee for the special election date, which will be June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The qualifying fee will be $180 for the council seat post one um, for the un- the unexpired term for Cameron Andrews. Within that ad, there's also the dates for the, um, qualifying. And that will be held on April twenty-sixth through April twenty-eighth, starting at eight-thirty that morning and then ending at four-thirty PM on April twenty-eighth. In addition, it mentions the last day to register to vote, which would be the close of business on May seventeenth. And then the early voting for the special election will be May twenty-fourth through June ele- June the eleventh, um, eight to five. Polls will be open seven AM to seven PM on election day. And if there should be a runoff election that would be required, then the runoff election would be held on July thirteenth. So at this time, Mayor, it'd be appropriate to, um, entertain a motion to adopt the qualifying fee for the special election to be held on June fifteenth for the unexpired term for council post one seat of, uh, Councilman Cameron W. Andrews in the amount of $180.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we set the qualifying fee for the special election to be held on June fifteenth at $180.
Second. Yeah, most of them are second. Okay, there's been a discussion on that, but I'd like to recuse myself from this. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the votes say aye? Please, we have one recuse. Post one, Councilman Andrews. All right. Next thing we have comments from the council and I always start with post one.
Post always.
You know, I've had a lot of comments and I'm the mayor in this, to tell you that I have no comment.
Post two.
Well, Mayor, you know, what can you say about Councilman Andrews that is appropriate in the public? You know, I had to laugh a little bit when he, when he told the chief, the incoming chief in his comments there that he could speak to him without his guarded filter on. This has been the guarded version. But I'd like to be, I can be on that phone call. Y'all pray for Angie. I know that we have not seen the last, uh, before Councilman Andrews. He's going to be, uh, we're going to hear from him, I think, early and often. That's a good thing. Uh, Cameron, you've been a colleague, you've been a friend, you've been a, a co-laborer. Uh, he, he spoke at my church. He, uh, he texted me Sunday morning on Eastern and said, hey, I pray for you today. It's a big day. And, uh, you know, you treated me like an equal when we were not and we are not. And I, uh, will be forever grateful to you for that. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Post three.
Um, yeah, Mr. Mayor, my comments are up for Councilman Andrews also. Um, I, uh, want to say that I appreciate you. Uh, you were one of the people that really spearheaded my opportunity to serve in this spot. And I appreciate that. It's been a pleasure serving with you. Uh, I've learned a lot from you. Um, I've had some disagreements with you.
Oh, yeah.
But we've always seemed to be able to work things out.
That's right.
And, um, uh, I just really don't know what it means to be the senior council member here. But I've got a few minutes. It, it's been a pleasure to serve. So, and enjoy your time off.
I will. Post four.
So I also have comments for, um, Councilman Andrews. I certainly, uh, wish you and Angie the best. I know that it's been a pleasant experience working with you. Uh, I've had an opportunity to learn a lot of things. Uh, I, I think, uh, learning things is, is what, is what really helps when you, when you're just listening and paying attention to uh, what's going on around you. So, uh, I appreciate all your time and I certainly appreciate all the work and, and time that we put in together. Um, so, you know, just end it at that. So I just think you're, I think you're a very special person and, you know. And that needs to make sure everybody, uh, in the community knows that, that there's going to be rollout bins throughout the, uh, city. So if you don't know where they're at, please look at our website. The information is posted out there. Um, I'd like to just take a moment of silence tonight, uh, for the passing of, uh, Ben Gleaton, who was the Macon Bib Fire and Arson Investigator who recently passed away. And also for, um, Christopher Knight, who's a deputy from Bibb County Sheriff's Office who recently passed away today. So if y'all, please, uh, just take a moment to pray for them and their families.
I'm down here.
Thank you very much. Councilman Andrews, you've gone out and had some, uh, some interesting times together over the years. I mean, more than once, you know, remember? I have some memories you don't want to talk about anymore. We talk about them on ourselves, but that's right, you know, we don't go in front of the. But I tell you what I've appreciated about you, Seth, uh, oftentimes you've made me look at something in a different perspective. And that was important to me, uh, because I would do that and I'd see it from a different set of eyes, it seemed like. And you helped focus it on him. And I, you know, that's something that'll come from experience, uh, all the training you received and everything, and being up here for a long time. And like I said, I remember back in the P and Z days, man, planning buildings, we'd be in those things. You, you've been an influence on my life ever since I've known you. And I appreciate that very much. And I, I wish you and Angie and the whole family well and wish that we all love you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I will go down to, uh, out of number thirteen, executive session personnel matters. Councilman Wright, please.
Yeah, Mayor, this time I, I think it would be, uh, appropriate for us to dismiss the executive session to discuss some, some personnel matters.
On second.
Post your second. Okay, call for question. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the votes say aye?
Aye.
You know it's wrong.
He only said it twice. I'll take that count first. We'll be back soon.
Let's do it. Everybody ready? Counsel's adjournment session.
Mayor, it is time that it be appropriate to entertain the motion and adopt the resolution closing out the executive session.
I'll entertain the motion.
So move.
Aye. All the favors, aye?
Aye.
All the closing signs.
Raise your right hand, Mayor. Tonight's executive session was held for the purpose of discussing personnel matters, but you swear that the discussions were limited to that as allowed by law.
That's so clear. Counsel is now over. Please now over this.